I came down there, back from Worcester, probably a couple hours earlier than you did. It wasn't, it wasn't pretty.
Ready boss?
Yeah.
Okay, let's call ourselves to order. Today is Thursday, July 25th. This is the meeting of the Selectman Planning Board. Call the order at 7:34. Need a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item on the agenda, 7:30 is continued public hearing. Century Dwelling Special Report presented by Morland.
Thank you, um, we submitted a letter to the board last week or the week before on behalf of the owner and applicant requesting a extension to your next meeting. Reason being is that he's having the house redrawn, we've gone out and done more survey to do a site plan and a grading plan which you asked for, and he's also on vacation and the architect is as well in that time period, so what we want to do is to get the entire packet to you. There's quite a bit of information over and above what's normally required and we're putting that together. Hopefully, we can wrap this up at the next meeting.
So, as I understand it, you're looking for requests to continue to August 22nd at?
Seven thirty.
At seven thirty?
Yes.
Do I have a motion from the board?
Seven.
So moved.
Is that a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all those people who came down from Warren.
See you on the 22nd.
Now, you can go waste the voting. Now, we're very fortunate because we are now able to do everything from seven thirty to eight thirty that we'd normally do after nine forty-five.
Alright.
So, we had previously talked with Karen and Laura about, they've been working on some changes to subdivision regulations and stormwater regulations that we can talk to. But before we do that, let's do the accounting in minutes. Get those out of the way. Give them minutes?
There's no minutes.
Oh, yeah, no minutes.
No minutes this time.
Only seconds?
Yeah.
And hours.
But we do have a calendar.
It's too early in the meeting for those kind of jokes.
Like I said, I've been sitting in traffic for three hours, I'm a little punchy. Alright, I move that we approve $1,576.58 for the, or to Bills and Thomas Incorporated for Deer Common, the FOSD and Site Plan Construction Inspection Services, June 13th. And, that's the same one, right? It's just a duplicate?
Yeah, it's just one.
So that's, so I move that we approve the one bill for $1,576.58 to Bills and Thomas.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No minutes? Liaison report? I will confess that I missed a trip to Duxbury. I own up to the fact I missed the trip to Duxbury. I was at Sandwich at a Little League ballgame and I thought that grandfather response to do this overwhelmed and out crumped going to see Duxbury for public safety.
Don't be nervous, we'll find you a court if anything during the visiting.
Time well deserved out there.
We'll have to go to see that.
Any other liaison reports? Town plan report?
Okay, a couple of new things. The town is applying for an incentive grant to buy electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles. And, we were looking around at where we could really use those vehicles, and the main place seems to be for the inspections. The people who drive around doing inspections most of the day, so it's all like short, you know, stop and go, driving where an electric or, you know, battery type of vehicle would get really a lot of bang for the buck out of, you know, from the mileage. So, we're applying for incentives to buy three Chevy bolts which would be used by the building inspector, health director, and another one would be shared among other departments, including planning, probably mostly conservation and planning. And, those would replace the vehicles that we have now which are old, old, hand-me-down police cars that were, you know, police cars back in, I don't know, nineteen ninety-something. You know, they're really kind of ancient cars.
How much does the grant cover?
The incentive is $5,000 per vehicle. So, there would be three of those vehicles, and then the fourth one would be a Ford Fusion which is more like completely electric. And, with that, we would get a free, I mean, it sounds like a little thing in a cereal box, but, we would get a free charger which would also be available to be used by the public. So, that might go someplace like North Situate in the parking lot by the WPA building where it'd be really visible and people could see it and it would sort of jar their thinking into, you know, gee, maybe I could get one of those cars and use that. And, we probably also would get one for, that Fusion would probably be used by someone reading water meters. So, because they would be working the water department, we want to have a charger down by the water department also. So, so we've applied for that. So, we'll see what happens with that. On the firm maps, we put out a web last, there was a problem with one of the links because, you know, when you copy these links, they're just miles long and they don't translate when they start to make PDFs out of the document and so on. So, we had a problem with one of the links and now we're kind of revising the whole document, but there's going to be information in there about how people can try to get their property out of the flood zone, you know, when the flood zones change. And, also, how they can get, yes, try to get the line on the map changed, but they're going to have to have really scientific-based information to make a successful appeal.
Is there, is there a schedule for that? Sort of a?
Yeah, there is. Those changes should be into FEMA by, let's see, I believe it's something, it's October 17th is the deadline for that. The maps are available in hard copy in the building department, and they're also online, but what this web last is for is to make it easy for people to find where their property is and give them a little chart because FEMA just makes this stuff really complicated. So, you know, so this, we had one web last out which I think did reach a lot of people, but we're going to do like a second one.
Are you, I don't know if this is the exact problem, but if you have a really huge long link, you can go and, there's a website called Tiny URL, and it will translate that into a much smaller one because we have to do that all the time as well. And, and it still works, the link will work, and so you can copy and paste. So, if it is some huge long link?
Yeah, it's like five lines long.
Yeah.
And you have my line.
Yeah, go to tinyurl.com.
Okay, I'll try that. Yeah, I'll make it out of work.
And Laura, is there, is there sort of directions or instructions about how to, how to meet this October 17th deadline?
Um, not so much how to re, how to meet that deadline because people are going to have to hire, you know, probably hire, you know, coastal geologists to review their, you know, their neighborhood and that type of thing. And, I think the beach associations may be trying to organize people to work together if they really think that a map line is, is wrong. The reason why the lines change so much is that they increase the flood level that they expect. So, where it used to be a ten-foot elevation, it's going to a fifteen-foot elevation, so it goes much further inland.
That is a big change.
It is going up five feet in a number of areas, five or six feet.
You may have looked just in time.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, and, and people's rates are going to be affected very much, so. Some people are very aware of it, and then I think as time goes on, more and more people will get, you know, aware and really concerned about it.
Hmm.
So, the town really can't do that much about it. I mean, it's not, you know, something that the town promotes or doesn't promote, but we certainly want to get information out to people.
Yeah, that's all I was thinking is making sure everybody kind of understood what their course of action could or should be.
Is this the only source of information for people? I mean, is FEMA doing anything about this or any other agency in terms of informing people?
There are lots of websites, you know, FEMA has a lot of, of different links. We're also trying to get someone from FEMA to come down to Situate to present some information about why did this change, what does a change mean?
I mean, sometime before my bill shows up as, as twice what it was last year with no, no explanation or, you know, preview.
Exactly, because there are, there are parts of town where people have never been in the floodplain before.
Sure.
You know, parts of Sand Hills are now going to be included.
Yeah.
And Final Road where it intersects Hollet Street, the whole area in there which is a little bit low.
Oh, because of the marsh, yeah?
Yeah, that's, that's all part of a floodplain though.
Yeah, that's right.
And it never was one before.
Back along Haveli Road and Wyanna Way and all those, all those little streets.
Yeah, um, yeah. Kent Street, that whole area was not in, you know, parts of that were not in a floodplain. Parts of the area behind Jericho Road were not in a floodplain, and now they're going to be in a floodplain. So, people may be getting letters from their bank at some point, you know, oh gee, you've got to go out and spend, you know, thousands of dollars, so.
Maybe you go up as far as mine.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it goes quite that far.
Well, it could because of the marsh.
Yeah, the marsh is right there.
I know if you have it, but, um, yeah, you should check your house.
That's why I was looking for the map.
Yeah, did you find the, the web last? The first web last that went out?
Well, I got, I got it, but I couldn't get to the link that I needed to get to, get to my map.
Oh, it didn't work?
It was too long?
What we, the way we did it was-
I got a tiny URL that works.
We started out with the current maps and we're changing around to start with the new maps because the new maps, the link is easier. And also, I think that's what people really need to know, so we're putting that first. So, um, so that's going to be kind of interesting and-
But until you get that squared away, we could go over to the building department and say, show us the map.
Yes.
Okay.
And, if no one's around in the building department or they, you know, don't feel comfortable with, you know, showing where, where you are on the map, I mean, you can get me or you can get Patrick in conservation, so.
Okay.
We're all there.
Thanks.
Anyone want to talk to us about subdivision?
Karen actually has done a great deal of work on beginning to go through the subdivision regulations and looking at, you know, what we need to fix, just to kind of make them reflect what we're doing now, you know, things that we're already doing. But I also wanted to just bring up the point that a lot of what the planning board has to do is kind of reactive. When you get these applications, you have to, you know, step back, think about them, look at them, review them and so on. And, the regulations that you have and, and the zoning changes that you can do, that's, you know, an opportunity to go out and kind of be a little more proactive about prescribing what you want as far as new development and what you want the town to look like and so on. So, I definitely want to get, you know, any of your ideas about things we need to change, directions we need to go, you know, all of that. So, some of the things that, that we have done already are, they're pretty, pretty much, I think you can call them administrative. For instance, we now distribute plans to the water department, we ask for PDFs of plans so that we can distribute them better, and we need to have that in the regulations so that if we get some new surveyor from out of town that they understand, you know, that those are things that we're getting all the time even though it's not in the regulations. So, we want, and we want people to build their costs around what we're really asking for. So, we would include some of those things. The work that we did on the, the effective date of subdivision control, I think should be something that you really put in the regulations so that people can see it. There isn't all this, you know, wiggle room about what that date is depending on, you know, when, you know, when it's most convenient. So, I think that is something we need to put in there. There's some information that the water division wants to get as far as showing, you know, some of the existing water lines that will help them out. Some of the details that we have in the back of the subdivision regulations are kind of out of date and we need to update those, and that's something where we need to get some help from DPW.
This is our roadway?
Yeah, the road cross-section and some of the details on, oh, you know, all kinds of catch basin detail, you know, drainage system detail, that type of thing. On the Form A plans, to help you all make good judgments about access, we want to be asking them for a little more information about access on the private roads, the ones where there's the, you know, more, you know, subjective decision-making for you all. And then we want to do some, a little bit of tweaking on some of the fees. We're behind other towns on the Form A fees. For instance, most of the other fees were, yeah, we're probably a little bit low, but we're not, you know, too far out of whack. But the Form A plans, most of the towns around us were charging about two-hundred-and-fifty for each plan, and we're charging a hundred. And that's something, again, you can, you know, you can certainly waive or if somebody comes in and they're just changing a lot line and you don't think they should have to pay it, you know, that's, you know, that's fine. But, you know, that's, you know, something you, you guys decide. But, in general, you know, some of the, the Form As are really, you know, pretty oriented towards creating new buildable lots. And, on those ones, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, when you look at the cost, you know, of, of that lot, it's, it's not a big percentage of all that. And, the work that's involved with distributing them, processing them, now we're taking them down to the registry to get them recorded, you know, all of that is, you know, stuff that, you know, the town should get some, you know, something to cover all of that. So.
I don't know if anyone, excuse me, feels the same way, but I know we talked about this, I think, last year, a couple of years ago. Would the board be interested in having like some kind of design criteria about, like, like driving around, like streetlights? I noticed they're all different on all the different subdivisions. So, do you think it's, would you be interested in having some real, I'm not talking like really super strict, but some rough design criteria of maybe these are the three choices of streetlights, or these are the three choices of-
You're talking about for subdivision regulations?
Subdivisions, yeah.
Might as be, you've heard the textbook entitled Building With Nantucket In Mind? It's about yee-thick.
Yeah, again, I don't want to, I'm not talking about going insane. I'm just talking about maybe some uniformity. I mean, and I'm throwing that out there to see if there's any interest.
I mean, either regulations in terms of foot candles, spacing, height, things like that. I mean, do, do those exist?
No.
Oh, we don't have anything right now.
We don't have anything.
Yeah, basically, if we say-
Do other towns have, have those kind of regulations?
Yeah, they, they do. I mean, the, the, um, streetlights are a little bit of a red herring because they used to go through the selectmen because the selectmen, when the streets were accepted, they wanted to be able to control what the town's electric bill was. So, that's, that could still be an issue. But, in the meantime, you know, we can explore it, and I think it'd certainly be nice to get some attractive street lighting.
Yeah, I mean, some of the subdivisions you drive through and it's like, wow, those are really nice, and, you know, others are just, eh, okay, but.
I mean, that's part of it, the design, also the technical criteria are important.
Right.
There's certain foot candle level that is supposed to be maintained, half a foot candle or something minimum. There's all kinds of regulations if you're doing a development about light spill, you know, over, over your property line or, you know, sharp cutoff fixtures, things like that. Fixtures that don't shine up to create night sky pollution.
Yeah.
You know, things like that. So, that's probably part of a, a larger picture that could include some design criteria as well. Height is another one, you know, you'd rather, you'd rather see relatively more lower streetlights than of, you know, higher lights that spill more, more light off, you know, off the street itself into places that's not wanted, things like that.
Well, lighting, those kind of lighting technologies are developing too, where they now have sensors where they actually turn off streetlights when nobody's there.
Oh, right.
You know, all of that, so, I mean, you, you need to be sort of thinking about integrating. I mean, that could, that could lead to the, the whole question about what's the electric bill for? For those lights, right?
Or a particular kind of bulbs that would, you know, be much more efficient than some other kind of bulb, things like that, that you could, you could specify that those would be used.
Recently, street acceptance hasn't even talked about streetlight.
I think it's been off the table for a long time because there basically been no new streetlights.
Yeah.
You know, except maybe one at the, at the entrance.
Even on the streets that we are looking to accept, we haven't come back and required streetlighting.
Yeah, yeah. But, I think if there's a way to do it more efficiency, efficiently as far as the electricity, that could solve the problem and people would be happier.
Well, I noticed, I was driving, I think, a couple days ago on Evangeline Drive, you know, the new development there, and there's a post right there that I assume is going to be a streetlight. And I remember from the plans, I think that's what we, we required.
On the right when you go in?
Yeah, I think.
Related to that, I have a pet peeve. It, it, it seems like everywhere you go in Massachusetts, you're driving down the road and there's no street sign that tells you what street you're on.
Right.
Now, they tell you the cross street.
Yep.
But you, but you have no idea whether you're on the street where you think you are.
Yeah, there's a few towns that do it, not many.
And, and so, that's something I would like to see is, let's, let's make sure our people don't get lost.
So, as part of the regulations for the subdivision, it would be if you're on a major street, that would have to be marked?
If you're going to put up a street sign, put two signs, one that says the road that you're going across and then one that says the road that you're on. I mean, that's, we're used to seeing street signs like that, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we do?
Not in Massachusetts.
I know, not in Massachusetts.
You're right. I think the theory is if you don't know where you're going, we're not going to tell you.
Yeah, I understand that, but we know that you're not going to ask.
Well-
We know you're not, we know you're not from around here.
Don't you have a Garmin or GPS on your phone?
I can't tell how many times those things have led me to a vacant lot.
On the light-
I know Al, it just, I, I know Al is looking at replacing a lot of the street signs in town because there are new requirements for reflectivity and a certain color of green and, you know, all kinds of kind of obscure things, and I think he is looking at doing the main street as well as the cross street.
We, we did have a conversation about the proliferation of signs not too long ago, and the fact that there are too damn many.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's kind of going out of the-
Because that was the same, same thought that I had because it was, it wasn't that many months ago that we were talking about decreasing the number of signs available. We were looking at intersections and decreasing the number of signs.
Well, you get a lot of visual clutter.
Yeah, I think that's where else going.
And possibly, nine times out of ten, you go in there, there's open highway streets, you can't go out, come out the same way you went in.
So, on the bigger picture, are, are you suggesting that we have like a, a design, not a design session, but like a separate session that's wholly where we just sit down and we look at these regulations? Is that next, I mean, basically, what's the next step?
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a good next step.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I was just trying to test the waters and see if this is something you're interested in, because there's one design piece that, that we have been working on, but it's a little more involved, and that is to look at minor subdivisions, subdivisions of say, two, three, maybe four lots, and requiring, you know, not requiring the twenty-four foot road and, you know, the twenty, you know, twenty-two, twenty-four foot road, you know, going a little bit less intensive than that.
Subdivision length.
Yeah, subdivision length and so on.
And a light.
A light, yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
And, and instead of having to debate that and condition it, it would be part of the regulations.
Right, it would just be something available for people to do. And then, it would also help those people that have a couple of extra acres and they're maybe thinking about trying to develop, maybe not develop it themselves, but where it impacts a homeowner that's trying to sell a small piece of land and, you know, the development costs kind of affect them quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, even when they're not the ones doing the development. So, you know, not that those are the only reasons why you do it, but it just seems to make sense and you wouldn't have to go through all the waivers because, you know, what you really want would be laid out a little, you know, clearer.
Or would we have to go back and waiver some of the things where there's a conflict and what we've approved? Particularly the roadway and the underlayment.
Right.
Right, yeah.
When was the last time that you, there was a big, healthy look at the subdivision regulations? Do you remember?
Uh, two thousand, two thousand three, I think.
I'd say it was either two or three.
Was that, that was definitely after like the whole flexible open space thing?
Yeah, it was after the flexible open space, yeah.
Alright. So, it's been, it's all been almost, yeah, ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I think it's-
Probably time to do it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But portions of it we can do ourselves, but other portions have to work with the DPW and engineering to, to come back up and, and go through the technical details of, of culverts and structures and things of that nature.
And, and are you thinking of the fall meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, you vote on those yourselves, you don't need to go to town meeting.
Oh, is that right?
So, yeah.
We can handle the subdivision, we can publish those, vote those. Fees we can recommend and then they have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, right?
I think there may be something like that in the charter.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if it weren't for that, you could adopt them, but I think they want to-
As long as the fees are going up, the selectmen have usually been supportive.
So, so that's all I had.
Okay. So, what's the next step on that?
So, I think we'll put it on an agenda in the next, hopefully in the next month because I know we're going to be getting some large subdivisions in. We got two fourteen Clapp Road, you know, brought back in as a formal application just today. And then there's a subdivision, another subdivision for about eight lots, I think, that we're expecting. And, we're expecting that one in August. So, that one, I think, two fourteen Clapp, I think we're thinking about putting that on the agenda in September, and the reason it wouldn't be until then is that we want to have the time allowed for the Board of Health to give their comments, which is forty-five days. So, we're going to wait until that goes by, and also traffic rules usually, you know, has to have about, you know, three weeks before they meet because they only meet once a month, so we want to be sure to get on their agenda. So, I think, you know, maybe the end of August, we could throw on, throw this on the agenda and, you know, have some more discussion about it.
What do we have in the, like, on the 22nd? This Morland?
Right, there we have seventy-five from Morland, and based on other things that are to come tonight, you may have deliberations on three oh five countryway.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe.
Maybe, yeah. Um, yeah, well, there's also, August eighth is pretty, is pretty jammed, isn't it?
August eighth, right now, we have accessory dwelling at seven thirty, scenic row at quarter eight, and eight, and eight o'clock is a likely continuance from tonight's meeting because John will have had a chance to review the rest of the information submitted for three oh five.
So, maybe we can decide after, you know, after three oh five countryway and see where that goes to, and then whichever meeting in August we have free, I would hope it would be the further off one to give you all some time to think and look through those regs, and if anyone needs a, a hard copy, you know, printed out, let me know and we can, you know, we can print one out if by some chance you don't have one.
Is there any way you can do some preliminary research on the, on the design standards that Richard was talking about? Like, from other towns? Just examples of the, you know, perimeter towns?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if Cohasset or Marshfield or Norwell have something like that.
Yeah, they, they might.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would guess Duxbury does.
I would think any town within the Storick district is going to have those regulations for sure.
Yeah, like to see them.
Norwell certainly does, Duxbury for the district itself, but probably not outside.
I don't think we need to see the whole zoning regs, just the, just whatever subdivision standards they have, right?
Yeah. You're, you're talking about lighting.
Yeah, lighting specifically.
Lighting, yeah. What, I don't know what else they would have addressed besides lighting, maybe-
Yeah, I mean, maybe I should review it.
Utilities, maybe, yeah, I don't know.
Well, we have utilities already, it has to be under- It has to be underground.
Yeah.
I mean, the only other thing that might be interesting to find out is whether these other towns also are requiring a landscape plan.
Right.
Because that's something we've, we've gotten, you know, more involved at times. There was one time where we had a landscape design review going on and, and that wound up with some really neat plantings, but there was a cost to the applicant and, you know, you all decided that wasn't, you know, wasn't worth doing. But, but having the basic landscape, landscape plan is, is good. Maybe some examples of some nice landscaping around subdivisions we could get. Just kind of show what they do with those.
And then, just theoretically moving this forward, let's say we do this, we vote on it, it gets approved. When do those go, do they go into effect like the next fiscal year or how does that work?
No, I think they basically go into effect right away.
Right, when you vote on them.
You, you have to advertise them beforehand. So, everyone gets notified that, you know, that you're considering this. And then, it goes on your agenda and most of the engineers get, you know, the agendas, I think, you know, as a matter of course, anyway. You know, a lot of the attorneys do also. And we could make sure to invite them, you know, if you wanted to. You know, some of these things, they might be supportive of, others they might have resistance to, like, you know, lighting standards because that is gonna probably factor in the cost.
The cost, of course.
But after you all decide what you decide, then I think we would make a point of sending the new regulations out to all the engineers so they would know right away, you know, what had been changed. And, you know, they could start, you know, telling people and explaining how they can get like a low-cost light fixture that's exactly what the planning board wants or whatever, so.
Is there, is there some kind of written comment period or is it all public comment?
It's, well, it, it's a public hearing, just like any other public hearing.
Okay.
Get that, get that directed.
Yeah, good.
Where do we stand on medical marijuana?
We need to figure out the time of the meeting.
We, we've talked about that at some length, but we need to, as Laura was saying, I'd like to see a meeting involving the, what I'm referring to as the stakeholders and get some input and come up with kind of a unified consensus as to what we wanna do. You know, what our, what our community interests are and then have the regulation that we developed reflect that.
Yeah, so I, I haven't spoke to you about this, but Laura and I mentioned earlier this week, I had to stop in the office, about maybe tonight, we could come up with a meeting time. Like, I don't know, next week or something where we, we start to think about that.
That would be fine.
So, it's offline or whatever?
It's gonna sneak up on us pretty quick.
Yeah, it's, well, that raises a couple of other issues. Number one is, are we gonna, are we gonna look at the, at the accessory dwelling bylaw again and see if we can make that fly? And then, you know, so those are, those are the two issues in my mind, are medical marijuana, accessory dwelling bylaw, these other, other regulation things that we've spoken about. And then, we need to come up with a plan to market what it is and what we're about and make sure that we have a sufficient community support to, to prevail at town meeting.
Yeah, I would think we're under the gun for the marijuana.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that has a top priority in my mind.
I think that's gotta priority and depending on how long that takes, then I think we can go back and revisit accessory dwelling.
I think, I, I agree. I suspect that somewhere, we're gonna find some, some draft medical marijuana building regulations kicking around that we can, we can borrow heavily on. I think the issue with the accessory dwelling is pretty much done. We probably just need to tweak what we did before. I think the hard part's gonna be getting, getting community support.
It's getting the message out, yeah.
And that's, that's the thing that we need to focus on. I think we can fix the technical problems pretty quick. And I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel on, on the, on the language that we're gonna propose. I suspect, in fact, that if we were to contact one of the law firms that is involved with, with getting medical marijuana legal and advising people that are in that business, they'd probably provide a lot of support to us on a gratis basis.
Do you have some names of some of those firms?
I was aware, I, I know there's one in, I think it's out towards, not, Framingham, but I don't recall it right off the top of my head. I, I know that they're a Colorado transplant, but I can see if I can track them down. But I'm sure they'd be, they'd be happy to come and help us.
Good. Yeah, if you can get me their name, I can-
I'll, I'll, I'll follow, I'll follow up on that, yeah.
Well, and also, I'll put the, the burden on you to maybe think of an afternoon next week if you're available. Because I mean, usually the afternoons for you would be okay, right?
Yeah, mostly except Monday, I think, any of the days.
Okay.
Or Friday.
Or Thursday.
Or Thursday.
No, no, Tuesday's just really bad.
We're not open on Friday.
And then Wednesday morning between 9:00 and 30:00.
I, I could do Monday after about 2:00.
While he's looking at that, I was just curious about the, since the signs came up, what's the, the situation with the scenic signs?
We're working on those.
Okay.
Yeah, those are in, kind of in the mix.
The hopper.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we pretty much got the design. It's gonna have the town seal and then otherwise, it's gonna be fairly similar to what Norwell has.
Any, any afternoon next week except for Thursday? Wednesday would be, Mon, Monday and Wednesday would be better days.
Could do Monday like 2:30?
That's fine.
Let's just see, um-
You're gonna have two people there.
Yeah, so far.
That's the 29th, right?
Well, gotta post it if I got three, right?
You're only gonna have two.
I'm on three.
Okay, no, but I'm saying if you have three board members.
Two board members, two board members.
Yeah, well, can we have like a sub?
So, that's why I was-
You can have two, you can only, you can have three.
You can have two, so.
How about, how about if I-
I will facilitate your meeting by not attending.
I was gonna say, I could, I could go to the first part and leave.
I will do the same.
You, you wanna facilitate their meeting too, Bob?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thanks, we, we appreciate that. Good grief.
We're here for it.
We'll delegate.
All right, I'm sorry, now, what was that day again? Monday the 29th?
29th.
Actually, that's not good for me, but Wednesday would be good. Would that be okay? I know you said Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday, that's the 31st, right?
Yes.
We have a URL that takes those two calendars and puts them together and comes out with the listed-
I, I think, I think it does do that, but-
Tiny calendar.
What, what time?
2:30?
2:30?
That sounds perfect.
Okay, Wednesday is.
Laura, you also mentioned stormwater regulations?
Yeah, yep. Did you have any thoughts on that or you weren't?
No, I just, I was trying to get what you're thinking about on the stormwater regulations.
Well, I think what we have is basically good, but could be cleaned up so that some of the, the basic meaning of it is a little clearer for people to understand. We didn't write that here, so we had to kind of work with what we were given. The other part of that that I think we should really think about is, we don't have any kind of fee with that at all. And there's a fair amount of work and time involved with it. So, I think maybe we should think about that a little bit. And we also have no enforcement of that at all. And I think that kind of takes away from your ability to really get what you're looking for.
Well, that's interesting.
That was kind of a very borderline adoption in terms of support. So, you know, we kind of did what we had to do to get it through the system.
So, we'll, we'll tee that up at the same meeting we talk about subdivision regs then?
Yeah.
All right. Stormwater has to go through town meeting, though?
Well, not the regulation part. I mean, if we change the bylaw, then that has to go through town meeting.
So, we're gonna be careful how, what we do.
Yeah, we do. But I mean, I think you could add something for enforcement without going back to town meeting.
Okay, because, yeah, I think we left that kind of open ended.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Is there any recent update on the EDC study? The market study?
Um, not since we met with them. I checked on the Albin Space Map because the map that I saw looked like it was from Mass GIS, you know, from sources that we're kind of outside the town. We want something more like, you know, more concrete in terms of reflecting what's really there on the ground. And they are working on that and, yeah, I'm expecting at the next meeting that we'll have, you know, some more information about what consultant they picked and, well, they had gotten really just one response to their request for qualifications. So, I think they're gonna go with that firm and that was Community Opportunities Group.
They mean CBC?
Sorry?
CBC?
No, because the money for this came from the EDC budget.
Okay.
So, they're the same firm that does the work, the Housing Trust.
Yeah.
But this is like their economic side.
Hmm.
So, that's what's going on.
Okay.
Anything else? We have an opportunity to take a 20-minute break, a 15-minute break. If somebody would so make a motion?
Sure moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those bayer?
Hi.
That's never happened.
We reconvene at 8:30.
Laura, you gotta, just a quick, visitors here you brought in.
We're from California.
Have a sub-
Came to the east coast to get educated by government.
Bad idea. They are interested in figuring back into that with a busy approving district application.
First, California doesn't have a shining record.
And they would like to talk to the economic development.
It is, it's all relative.
Systems in order to make that happen.
So, how did the Duxbury visit?
Who would they talk to?
We actually have the- Chris McConkey.
Okay.
And I can send you his contact information.
Yeah, if you do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's great, I think they'd be really excited to hear.
And some good information about things you shouldn't do.
Okay.
And then, we rode by the senior center and it was, the door was open, so we said, "What the heck?" And we are. And there was a woman in there, anybody from a private party who was a former administrator, so she took us on a tour. So, we actually got to see her.
Super.
It was great, both were good. And we got into the Duxbury police station. They were mopping up from a flood in the building where all the floor drains had backed up and they basically had water.
Is eight thirty is the continuation of a public hearing and scenic road public hearing for three oh five country way. Flexible open space permit and a definitive subdivision plan as well as a scenic road hearing. Let me, before we proceed, let me, I read a couple of things to make sure that everybody understands. Tonight, the hearing is on the flexible open space special permit definitive plan and work within a scenic road layout being continued from our previous meeting of June twenty seventh. The board has received a revised density, conventional density sketch plan which is expected to be reviewed tonight. That's going to be the one that's over here. New comments have been received from the DPW, Lance Van Lenton and Bill Crussell, copies of which have been given to all members of the board. The applicant continues to revise the flexible open space development plan to need the input from the consulting engineer as well as from the DPW. This is the flexible open space plan will not be discussed tonight. We're going to talk strictly the conventional plan. And let me clarify who the voting members are. The members that you see here on the table are the ones that are going to be voting. Stephen, Bob, myself, Eric and Richard. Richard is, was absent at the six twenty seventh meeting, but he's allowed to participate because he has watched the films, read the minutes and done the appropriate necessary homework. He is so certified. And instead that-
One other thing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
With a correspondence, if you could add that we also received a memo from, email from John Clarkson, the chairman of the-
Good one, thank you.
That was the one that just came in, right?
Six fifty and six fifty-five.
And the new name for the development is White Ash Farm. Why don't you give us an update of what's transpired between now and six twenty seven? What you've responded to, and then we'll go talk to John here, John's view of the world.
Sure. Again, for the record, my name is Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer, Morse Engineering. The applicant, Doug Sheeran, his attorney, Michael Hayes, with us tonight. The plan that you see before you is the conventional density sketch plan as required by section five fifty point three of the bylaw. We made a number of revisions to this plan to address the comments that the board had for the last meeting. The specific revisions that we made were the geometric configuration of the lots we've revised a little bit. Lot one in particular, we previously had a three-foot strip of land out to the rear of the property. We've now revised it so that we have an eight-foot strip of land out to the rear of the property. We feel with an eight-foot wide strip of land, you can actually use that land for something. You could construct a walking trail up to the back portions of your lot. It's not simply a three-foot wide rat tail to gain lot area, but eight feet is acceptable to construct a walking trail and to utilize. Secondly, the roadway, Road A, as you see on the plan here, we shifted Road A slightly to the east. We previously had it directly against the one hundred and fifty-foot no disturb buffer, which is shown on this plan in purple. The revised location provides a minimum setback from that buffer of four and a half feet off of that buffer zone. The majority of the road is further than the four and a half foot setback. Thirdly, we revised the typical roadway cross-section. The roadway cross-section shown on the top corner of the plan here was revised with respect to comments from the DPW regarding the cut and fill along the left-hand side of the roadway. We added cross pitches to the cross-section, two percent cross pitch on the crown. We added the minimum setback between the no disturbance zone and the right-of-way of four and a half feet and was showing that you could construct a retaining wall within that four and a half foot wide location without disturbance into the one hundred and fifty foot no disturb buffer zone. That's primarily accommodated by the driving of a sheet pile directly at the one hundred and fifty foot no disturb zone. Everything within the right-of-way, you know, could be excavated and constructed with a retaining wall with absolutely no disturbance on the resource area side of that one hundred and fifty foot buffer zone or that sheet pile. That summarizes the plan changes that we've made here. I'm willing to go over the individual lots if the board has questions on those. Again, all of the lots here fully comply with the zoning requirements for the district they're located in. They're all serviced by their own private septic systems. They're all serviced by their own individual driveways. The road fully complies with your regulations as do the lot. Conventionally, we have a three-lot layout at this property.
Okay. Questions to the board? All right, here from John. Let's hear from John.
Sure. I know something came in this afternoon that, I believe, was in this plan, it was sent this afternoon. The plan that I reviewed, the retaining wall was basically at the right-of-way, so the footing would be under the right-of-way. That's where the DPW, I mean, I think the whole issue with it, well, the main issue with this is, I think, this wall situation. You have a wall basically from here coming along, then there's a gap, and then it comes along like this up close to this no disturb zone. I think the lots are irregularly shaped, we can all agree, but there's nothing about zoning that says you can't do that. So, this, you know, if you don't like this type of lot, you get to change your zoning. This is allowed. So, it's really the wall. The wall, at this stage, wouldn't be designed. Nobody's going to spend the money to design a retaining wall. So, the question is, can you fit a retaining wall in four and a half feet? You might. I'm not a structural engineer. Generally, the rule of thumb is that the base is two-thirds of the height. So, it's probably pretty close. But I think the exposed, and when I say the height, it's the height and feet of the wall, not just the exposed face. So, I think it's an exposed face, the highest point is five feet, but I'm not sure that the five feet is where that is along here. I mean, it's a tight fit, no question about it. Can you, can you do it? Could you find some sort of design of a wall that would fit? You probably could, because you could probably do just, if it's four and a half feet, you could probably just get a gravel wall, four and a half foot of solid cement.
Or do a flag pole, sorry.
You know, and just, or you could drive piling, you know. There's probably a way to do it at a huge expense to respect this one hundred and fifty foot line if you absolutely had to. So, but, you know, I think that really, if, if this was actually going to be a plan, I don't know that this is something that the board would want, because this may not be an acceptable wall to the town relative to having it, whatever would have to fit in there. And it may not be something that the town would want to endorse as a plan to have, this particular plan with a wall like that right along the side of the road, even if it's just outside of it, it's still a factor. If you ever had to excavate to build it, again, because it failed, there's no way you could excavate this without excavating the road. Can you build it so that technically it's outside the right-of-way? You know, probably, maybe not this wall, but you could come up with some wall that would certainly fit, I imagine. It's all, I think, like, it's the highest, I think, is only five feet high. So-
It's still got to be four feet below the-
It's still going to have a footing, it's still going to have-
Got to be below the frost line and all that, right?
Right. So, you've got to excavate down four feet. So, generally, what they take the height from is the top of the footing. So, if you have a two-foot footing, which you could do, then instead, then you've got two, you've got a seven-foot wall, two-thirds of seven is roughly about, you know, you probably could get the four and a half. I mean, you probably could get something to fit in there. But again, it's, this is a sketch, it's not an actual design. So, how it would actually look, usually the thing's closer to the, you look at a typical retaining wall, the side on the downhill side's smaller than the backside. That's just the way they do it. But, there's not much else to say. I think everything else that was in the preliminary plan requirements, they have pretty much done. The question really comes down to the wall. I mean, you know, obviously, where you submitted it, this is what they wanted to do. I don't know that the board would be thrilled with this layout, but that's a whole other issue.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I think it, it certainly is a tight, tight layout. And I think, you know, the board would be, you know, could really go either way with this. I think you can, you can see how they did fit the three lots. You can also see this as kind of an indicator about the lack of the lot shape factor in the bylaw. Other towns have it. They wouldn't wind up with lots like this there, which isn't, you know, any kind of aspersion on situates bylaw, but, you know, if you want to not get lots like this, I think that's something, you know, to think about, you know, bringing to town meeting. But right now, we are where we are with it. I had had a concern about the, the house that was built on the slab and the setback to the septic system, but it looks like that's a good distance away at this point, and that's been changed around, and you're not dependent on that being a slab anymore.
No, all foundations are conventional foundations and comply with the-
With a full basement, okay. It does still say slab, but, you know, I didn't think you absolutely, oh, I see, that's just the elevation, okay. So, I think that you don't have an issue with that anymore, and most of the other issues have been addressed. So, you know, it looks like it probably meets the letter of the bylaw, but it's, you know, it's a real, real close fit. That's all I have.
I'm going to give you a break, Richard. I'm going to start with Stephen on the other end.
Okay. Did I read that there was some question about the location of the septic system? I thought we had a comment on that, and is that addressed now?
We did initially, because I think the first plan that you showed depended on the house being a slab, being, having a slab instead of a foundation for part of the foundation. But you changed the-
Correct. On our, on our previous version, lot three was a slab foundation. Now it's proposed as a conventional little lockout base for the back.
So, you can meet the twenty-foot offset?
So, you're meeting the septic system?
Meets the setbacks under title five.
Yeah, other than that, I still, I have some doubt as to whether the, the wall design, as it's shown here, is something that we would really want to approve in a conventional subdivision plan. But as, as John said, there's probably something you can design in here to make it work. But I, I think, you know, as far as this, the limits on the no disturb zone, you know, if we go to a flexible subdivision plan, I think we need to find a way to protect that zone. But, you know, other than that, you know, I don't really have any other comments on it.
Okay, Robert?
Question, Greg. It looks as though the critical aspect of this wall relative to the no disturb does not exist for the full length of the wall. It looks like it exists locally at one point about halfway into the neck and another point right at the sort of curve where you belly out, right in there, for maybe forty feet at a stretch, you know, forty feet there and forty feet up at the curve.
That, that's correct.
So, that would really be the only place you'd be proposing the sheet piling and the sort of jammed-in aspect of the, of the construction itself.
Correct. Simply really between this, this section right here and then this portion right down here. In, in between, you have, you know, well in excess of, you've got, you've got ten feet, twelve feet, and, you know, even more up near countryway, but it's really just that one portion approximately forty feet in length and then down here.
Right.
Again, approximately forty feet in length.
Right.
Correct.
And that's the only place you propose sheet piling?
That's the only place where I think you'd need it.
You'd need it, that's the only question.
In order to excavate for the foundation and for the retaining wall.
It also strikes me that if, coming off of the curve, if you swung the, the wall closer to the roadway layout and further to the east, you would minimize, again, the sort of area where the wall is very close to the no disturb limit. I don't know if it's necessary or worth doing, if it would screw up grading for that, for that house that you've got located there, but it seems to me, I guess what I'm saying is you'd want to design this so the linear feet that you were in a critical situation was, was minimized.
Correct, correct. And, you know, you are correct also as well, that you could shift this road a little further to the east to even increase that setback more. The constraint is the, you know, the board talking about the, the width of usable area on lot one here. You know, I previously had that at three feet, and there is no minimum width given in the bylaw. We could have a one-foot strip contiguous land over that. We kept that at eight feet. So, this road could shift even further over, you know, minimizing this setback or minimizing this lot width, you know, without compromising the bylaw.
Okay. Eric?
I would just ask the same questions about the technical details with respect to that retaining wall, and that, that horse has been beaten.
Sure.
Not yet.
I'd, I'd just like to add, you know, with regards to retaining walls, the DPW and, and your own regulations require, they allow you to construct retaining walls such as this. It's required that they be outside of the right-of-way, the forty-two-foot right-of-way width, and that's how we have this positioned. The board has accepted retaining walls on other sites. One that comes to mind specifically is as you go into Sam Tilden Farms, there's a retaining wall on the left-hand side. That's approximately four feet in height that was constructed along that right-of-way. That's holding back a lot, but it's right along the right-of-way. This is holding up the road. It certainly is constructable. The four and a half feet is the minimum pinch point. We feel that we can, you know, construct a footing. Have we structurally designed an entire structural load-bearing wall? No, but I think as John points out, you typically don't do that at this point in time. I think it could be constructed. You could drive piles for foundations. There are different types of walls that we could lay out there, but I think we've certainly allotted the area to construct something that would work.
Richard?
I just want, did we address all the comments from the DPW? I was just curious about, like, it says clarify how road monuments would be set in the vicinity of the wall.
I think they, they did address that.
They did? Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. And that was also the slopes too as well, right?
I think the key elements were the, the road grade and, and the base of the wall, retaining.
Right, whether that was-
Both of which have been correct.
Yeah.
And slope.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, from what I see, it certainly meets the regulations. Again, the shape of the lots is strange, but we've talked about that. There's no specific mention of that in the bylaw, so, so I have nothing further.
Let me, let me chip on. First thing regarding the, the lots' shapes, I think you see it more distorted in, in looking at the transitions from a conventional to a flexible than anywhere else, because you're trying to maximize the number of houses that you could get. So, I think that's why we see it really net. I, I think if push comes to shove, they would, and this is what they had to build, they would probably see if they couldn't do a little bit better on the lot shape and the lot locations, lot sizing. I guess, I still have a concern with this, this lot. I'm trying, I'm trying to put a lot of houses in, into something that is a very convoluted piece of property at best, I think. I think I'm astonished at what you've engineered, to be very honest with you, for it. But I keep asking myself, would I approve this? If this was the subdivision in front of me, would I approve it? And I, I keep coming back with an answer of no, I'm not sure that I would. My concern is really the do not disturb. I, I listened in that, and I, I'm satisfied if I put enough engineers in a room, I could come up with more than one workable design for that wall. I just, I'm not sure that, that in effect, it would be something that would ever be built because of the cost. So, I don't think that, that what I've got is, I think I've got a feasibly technical subdivision that in reality wouldn't be built. And that's, that's the dilemma, that's where I sit. Okay, comments from the rest of the board before I ask the public?
Do we, it's an interesting question. Do you, do you have a cost estimate for what it would take to build that?
We, we don't have a cost estimate for that. I'd only anticipate it would be as much as to, to eliminate the benefit from creating a new lot, though. You know, a lot value, you're probably figuring one seventy-five, two and a quarter. Some subdivisions get more, some subdivisions get three hundred thousand a lot. I don't expect the construction of this wall, again, at the maximum point, we're talking five feet in height. There are significant portions of this wall that are only two feet in height. So, it's not as massive of a structure as I think, where, it's not a five-foot hollow wall for the whole length of this roadway.
Yeah, the trade-off to the cost of the wall is really the third lot.
Right.
So, I mean, the economics would be skewed when you think of it that way.
But I would also think of it in terms of not just where the road is, but protecting the no-build zone after these lots have been occupied. With a delineation like a stone wall or something like that as well.
Yeah, I mean, once, once I've come back up and I've put the wall, I've come back and I've constructed and I've taken the wall out, I still have that do not disturb area.
Right.
Young lady here?
Hi, my name is Martha Cook. I'm on the Water Resources Committee. Mr. Clarkson is not able to be here tonight, so I think you got the email that he sent. We discussed this again at our meeting this week. We've looked at the plans off and on over the last several months, and as a whole, the committee's very concerned about this because it's extremely close. The one hundred and fifty buffer zone is perilously near people's backyards, the road, the driveways, the septic systems. You know, I think pragmatically, if you think about our last winter, just where are you going to put all the snow becomes an issue. You can't go over the wall because no matter how tall you built that wall, it, it can't get down even to tributary because you can't be adding sand and salt. You know, I, I think selfishly, I'm trying to put myself in the position of somebody who wanted to buy this as an investment or a person who can buy a home there. If I was told that I could never enlarge the home, I can't add a bedroom, I can't increase my septic system because I'm limited because of the way things look, from the standpoint of a real estate broker, a home buyer, I, I would just wonder how marketable that is. Again, partly because of the restrictions. The whole Water Resources Committee Board in general says, we feel like when you look at that lot, that's a two-house lot, not a three-house lot. I agree, this is a major feat of, I'm very impressed with the way it's all drawn out, but I just think in reality, it presents a lot of problems that I, I'm not satisfied are resolved. And we were hoping there would be a wall that would line it to show exactly with demarcation on the one hundred and fifty foot buffers, so that then you'd end up having two walls. So, I don't know. I just, we're very concerned about the fact that this feeds into a water source for the town that we need to protect at all costs, and that's, that's our job. Again, I, if, if I owned it and I wanted to develop it, I'd be searching for every way possible to put as many houses possible on, but I'm, I'm not charged with that. I'm charged with protecting the water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lance?
Yeah, I have similar concerns. I used to be on the Water Resources Committee as well. One of the things that, that strikes me about the plan is that when you look at the points IB eight through IB one oh one, a lot of plan says that the bank can't be seen of the tributary. In fact, that doesn't make any sense because we can determine where the edge of a tributary is. I mean, they may need to hire a hydrogeologist to go out there and look at the area and determine that, but I don't think that the, the certain zone has been accurately shown, especially to the west of the drainage area. It may actually intrude into the drainage basin. The other thing is that I was on a, on a bylaw review committee, and we reviewed a lot of the bylaws in the town, and I, I participated in hearings during the development of the flexible open space bylaw. And to me, it doesn't make sense to use that bylaw because the town isn't receiving any new open space. The non-disturbance zone has existed since nineteen eighty-nine, and it's basically a protection zone where you can't even put an outhouse or a shed or whatever. So, the town isn't gaining any new open space. And the other thing is that if you're putting a structure along an area that slopes downward, you're going to be changing the hydrology, the drainage patterns in that property, and you will be impacting the non-disturbance zone. I mean, look at the amount of rainfall we've been getting lately with these, you know, flash hits of heavy rain. It's going to be degrading that area if you put a solid structure even four feet away from that zone when you consider the sloping quality of the property. So, in general, I go along with the other opinion here that if you have two homes in that property, you have more land to put decent-sized homes on it with properties that they can enjoy, and you would be able to have enough land to address the drainage problem without building a huge retaining wall that would really don't let it alone.
Want to address those?
Sure. First off, the Water Resource Committee comments. The opinion that is expressed here is purely that it's an opinion that there should be two homes. The bylaw specifically has dimensional requirements, and we comply with the three lots. It's an opinion that there should be two homes. The bylaw specifies. A previous plan prepared for this property, this isn't just my engineering, this is an engineered plan that was endorsed by the town in nineteen eighty-six for three lots on this property. It was granted an approval, it was never constructed. This is a three-lot property. We're not here to discuss marketability. We've been called with inquiries on these lots already. They are. We've talked about the demarcation of the one hundred and fifty-foot no disturb zone post-development. We can certainly talk about that or include some sort of demarcation as part of an open space development. We're here to talk about the conventional density plan. For all intents and purposes, we could, we could propose a stone wall along the one hundred and fifty-foot no disturbs on, on the conventional density plan. The conventional density plan was not designed to, to get into that detail because it's not to be built. It's purely to develop what the conventional density yield will be for an open space plan. And at that point, if the board agrees to this type of layout, and we develop an open space plan, we can certainly talk about demarcation. Mr. Van Lenton has not had the benefit of reviewing what I have reviewed in the field, what the Conservation Commission has reviewed in the field, what the town's consultant, Steve Ives, has reviewed in the field, nor my wetland scientist, Brad Holmes, with a Masters of Engineering in Environmental Science, has reviewed in the field with respect to the banks here. But what I can tell you is that there was no bank observed between this location and this location. And we've got, our, our demarcations extend out onto the property with our one hundred and fifty-foot no disturb zone based on the flagging of the most up gradient resource area. And in this zone here, what you'll note on the previous plan, maybe back in nineteen eighty-six, there was a bank that was observed. You'll notice it goes off the property. It does not take a radical change and come toward our project. It goes off the property. So, I don't expect that there is anything wrong with the demarcation of our bank or our one hundred and fifty-foot no disturb zone. The drainage, as shown on this plan, is collected within the roadway, it's treated through a swarm scepter unit, it's treated through a drainage parcel. Comments regarding the drainage for the development of this property will, will defer to John as we review the full drainage calculations that have been prepared for an OSRD, or flexible open space development. The conventional density plan is not to have full drainage calculations prepared with it, but I can assure you that this drainage system here is larger in size than what we have gone through with John for the full design of the drainage for the flexible open Those are my comments. This is a fully compliant plan. I, I come back to it's a fully compliant plan. The property has been demarcated as three lots previously. It complies with the zoning requirements again.
Can I respond to one comment?
Sure.
I, I was actually on that property as part of the review.
Conditions change over the years, and I don't know that I've been on it since.
Wait, 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 wait. It's through, it's through me or it's not at all?
I'm sorry. Can I just respond to the comment you made?
Okay. So, your, your observation is you were there- So, your observation is you were there in 1986?
Yes, as part of the first Henry Brook watershed initiative, we were on that property as well as a number of the properties looking at tributaries, and that's the reason why when I became involved with the Conservation Commission, I requested that the DP come down here because they were involved looking at those tributaries while others, you know, at least the drainage areas related to them had been created in the map. But I'm familiar with that broad area that's referenced as a, not having a bank, and I think a bank could be found, and I think that's something that we're focusing so intently on the non-disturb zone, is having to see that zone, I think is important to consider.
Point made.
Can I ask a question, just maybe to your Bill or to Laura? Like, what are the, as the board's sort of legal obligations? Is it just the letter of the bylaw for all of the, I say, all those conditions have been met as far as, you know, setbacks and all the legal things? Is there any leeway there as far as, I guess what I'm trying to say, discretion on the board's part of, you know, we're trying to set the number, and I think that's what it's all coming down to. And so, are we, is there a legal obligation if they've met all the letter of the bylaw? Or is there some interpretation of that? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I think there's always some interpretation because it is a special permit process, it does require a vote of four out of five to set the density. So, I mean, this is a vote that does require a supermajority. And I think that some points were already made by, you know, a number of different people about some of the things to look at, and I think it wouldn't be out of the realm to look at whether it's really reasonable to construct that wall for the length, you know, it actually looks like it's, I come up with a longer length, I come up with about, you know, over 100 feet in each sections, yeah.
But it's only a small, it's only a small area right there.
Well, it's actually, it's from here to here.
But where it's closest to the road is just right here.
Oh, okay, but I mean, the whole thing is dependent on putting that wall in.
You've got to construct the whole road, though. You've got to take the whole thing out.
Yeah, the design is pretty much going to be the same all the way through.
I think you go with the design they presented, and you look at, you know, is this really, you know, reasonable and realistic as well as, you know, meeting the letter of the law? With some things, I think it's probably not appropriate to do that. I mean, for instance, you know, I think, I mean, it's all subjective, but the way they have changed the width of, you know, what you would call the rat tail, that's a little more reasonable, and considering the fact that Situate doesn't have a lot-shaped factor or any real lot-shaped control, I think that makes it harder to, you know, to interpret that negatively, but I think, you know, you really kind of need to look at the whole thing and determine, you know, is this something that would really be built? Because I think you look at it kind of from the opposite end, if this doesn't get approved for the three lots, then, you know, what's, what are their options? You know, would their option really be to construct this as a three-lot conventional plan? And, you know, that's what's not quite clear.
I have a question. Would the wall be built before the rest of the construction in order to protect the ecology? Or what would the sequence be in terms of when the wall would be?
You can answer, Greg. My feeling is it would have to be built ahead of time.
I just want to be clear, make sure everyone understands the process. This plan is not proposed to be built. This is a conventional plan, only used to establish the number of lots so that we can come in with a detailed plan that we proposed to build. And we have done that without any walls. This conventional plan could be built by first installing a sheet pile, secondly, excavating for the foundation, for the pudding, for the retaining wall, and then bringing the fill-in for the road. That's how the construction sequence for that roadway would be. You'd install a sheet piling first, secondly, the pudding for the retaining wall, thirdly, the retaining wall itself, and then you bring the fill-in behind the retaining wall to bring the road up and ready.
Because I think that helps me understand, again, in reference, just to my concern on this is, if you can protect the ecology of the tributary primarily from the beginning, that would put my mind at ease in terms of then how the rest of things go forward. Is it possible to see your version of what it would look like if there's two lots?
I don't have a plan like that, we're proposing three currently. I can show you the plans for three lots as we're currently proposing, I don't have them prepared for tonight.
Yeah, let's just stick with this one so we can decide what we're voting for.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
I have a question, just Lisa Mertola. Is there a need, I guess, to put three lots in such a small, fragile spot? You know, off the road, there's a development that, where I don't see all the houses sold yet, and it just begs the question, I know, like, the market conditions are not on the table, but, you know, 1986 shouldn't have been referenced either because it's the era that's passed, and who knows what the circumstances of that other proposal was. The question is, where the town has experienced a lot of growth, the resources are fragile, we have our DPW folks talking about water shortages from time to time, and certainly the quality of the water is another issue as we've got flash flooding occurring. So, it's just, from an environmental standpoint, this seems crazy to have more than two homes on that piece of land, and I think there's a lot of concern about that, and I just want to reiterate it.
Thank you. And I think they're all valid comments, but the concern that we've got is we really have to look at this and say, look at it not from the impact that it could have necessarily, is, does it comply with zoning, and is this something that could be constructed? Because that's going to make the determination of, then the flexible, which then, and we have a lot of control over how it's being built, and how it's sized, how it's located, and what the construction elements would be. Back to the board.
I just had a follow-up question that was brought up, I didn't hear a response to, that had to do with the snow plowing and snow disposal and all of that. What would the plan be in the conventional subdivision here?
So, the same amount of snow obviously is going to fall on this property for development or post-development based on area. The disposal of the snow, once it gets plowed along the edges of the right-of-way, what you'll notice is that your typical roadway cross-section requires that the grass strip in the sidewalk on either side of the right-of-way be sloped so that any meltwater ends up back on the pavement. At that point, it'll come down the right-of-way, it'll get captured by a catch basin, a deep-sump wooded catch basin. It'll come down through a drainage easement, through a particle separator, and through a detention basin system, okay? All fully compliant DEP storm water management policy, treated prior to discharge. The discharge is outside of the 150-foot no-disturb zone.
And is that true for the home driveways too?
Yes, the driveways all slope. Again, the driveways are all going to slope either to the roadway system or they're connected, how we have it graded, there's a swale down this side to direct runoff to the drainage system, a swale down this side directing runoff into the drainage system. All stormwater flows from this development are properly treated.
Any others?
The one other thing we did talk about was sightlines at the road, and I'm assuming we have, even in this conventional, there's an easement or something that...
We have talked about providing on the flexible open space development, shown there's an easement across Lot 1 with no plantings. You could certainly propose that on...
So, this, where this is located provides enough area for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? I would submit that it's decision time.
Question, Joe?
It's Bill, but that's okay.
Can I have some questions for you, for your engineering consultant? If they do construct a wall, and there is a slope, gradual slope heading in the direction of the non-disturb zone, could you, would that change the flow path so that stormwater would be sent, more stormwater would be sent in the direction of the non-disturb zone?
Right now, the grades of the land, basically this slopes this way right now. There's a house right here, and the backside of the house, actually, it goes down like that. So, what would happen, where this road do ever be built? The runoff in the roadway would go into the drainage system which comes down here and into this, and then into this. I mean, ultimately, any water from here that doesn't get infiltrated, because the design is a flexible plan, as an infiltration component, any non-infiltrated water is going to flow to the reservoir. I mean, but today, whatever doesn't soak into the ground flows to the reservoir.
If the water hits the wall, it's going down a slope, would be, the speed of the water be increased in the direction of the tributary, of the non-disturb zone?
No, because the way it's set up is the wall...
I'm talking about the outer slope of the project.
Yeah, basically, the proposal would be not to change the grade on the other side of the wall, and on this inside of the wall, roadway side of the wall, it's graded to pitch to the roadway. And in this location here, where the wall's away from the roadway, there's sort of a swale here like this that would direct the water into this way, that's the way it's drawn on this plan. So, there would not be any water directed into this zone here from this roadway, other than whatever matches the grade at the bottom. Certainly, there'd be a disturbed area that would have to be reseeded, and they'd have to put up erosion controls.
What about along the lots, the back of the lots, like the west?
This side of the lots?
No, the other side of the lots.
This side? This would flow to the road which would collect it, it wouldn't go down.
I'm talking about the lots further down.
These lots?
Yeah.
Well, there's a swale here drawn on the plan that would direct any water on this side this way.
But what if you go out the other way, no water?
Well, if this is a no-disturb zone per the bylaw, I would assume that a homeowner here isn't allowed to do anything over there. Can you stop somebody from going over there? I don't know if you've got a policeman sitting in the cul-de-sac watching somebody mow his lawn and he doesn't go over here and make the lawn bigger. You know, right now, today, well, actually, the house is gone, I guess it's been torn down, the house was in the non-disturb zone.
As I read it, basically what happens is on the upper portion, down past the cul-de-sac, you're actually putting less water into the non-disturb area with this design than you had before.
Yeah. So, the whole project is not unbound anymore?
It's unbound, but what happens is the natural sheeting is going across, you're interrupting it in the middle and reverting it down through the cul-de-sac, down through the system, down into the basin.
Correct. What if you flip it around the other way? The main purpose, one of the main purposes of the non-disturb zone is to have a recharge area, and that's a recharge area for the tributary. Are you removing flow that would normally go into the tributary?
No.
I think you're directing it, you're directing it to the basin, and it recharges perhaps more locally and at a greater rate from the basin than it might if it were spread out all over this entire area.
It's localized.
It's the same amount of water.
Yeah.
Same amount of water.
It's a, the distribution is different, but it's localized at the basin.
Right.
Okay, we're back to decision time. We need a motion, one already on.
I would move that we approve this plan as presented to us tonight. Do we have a written motion?
Where you're going to go, yeah, we have, we have a motion for that.
I beg your pardon, Laura, I didn't mean to trespass on the process.
Do we want to have any discussion on?
Well, let's...
Well, you make the motion and then have the discussion.
It's some findings and then a motion, which might be helpful.
Well, let's take a look at it and see, because I think what we need is a basic up or down, and then we can figure out whether we need to...
Well, I think if you start with the findings, then you've got kind of the facts laid out in front of you, and then the decision should, yeah, once you get done with the findings, then you can stop.
Oh, these are just the findings?
You're our official reader, Richard.
Okay, these are just findings?
Yeah, these are just...
Just the findings.
Richard, the reader, just the findings.
Only the findings, nothing but the findings.
Okay, then I see the second one, yeah. All right. I move that the planning board make the following findings a fact with regard to the conventional density sketch plan for 305 Country Way by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated dated February 19th, 2013, with revisions through July 25th, 2013. Number one, Douglas E. Sharon filed an application for a special permit for a flexible open space development under Situate zoning bylaw section 550 on February 28th, 2013. The property is 8.56 acre parcel in the residential R1 and R2 and Water Resource Protection districts. A portion of the property is in the floodplain and watershed protection district. Number two, a portion of the property is located within a DEP Zone A, Surface Water Supply Protection Area. There is a tributary adjacent to the property which has 150-foot no-disturb buffer per the zoning bylaw section 520.5. The location of the tributary has been well-established following direct review in the field by the DEP. Number three, a conventional density sketch plan for 305 Country Way by Morse Engineering Incorporated dated February 19th, 2013, was filed with the application for the special permit and subsequently revised on May 13th, June 6th, June 24th, and July 15th, 2013, to reflect Zone A setback lines enforced by the DEP and the Situate zoning bylaw, and to meet the specifications for a preliminary plan as described in section 4.2, subsections A through S, accepting PM, N?
P and N, I think it is.
It should be P, comma, P.
Me plan, okay, okay, um, okay, sorry.
And also, isn't there one more plan, or is that somewhere else?
No, July 25th.
Yeah.
Oh, I think that was just about to set the location of the tributary, though.
No, the conventional density sketch plan should also be July 15th and July 25th, correct?
Correct.
2013.
Why don't you just say, meet the specifications for as required in the zoning bylaw?
And meet the, meet the specifications for a preliminary plan as described in section 4.2, subsections A through S?
I was just going to say, no, just say as required by the zoning bylaw instead of being quite so specific.
Oh, okay, so, to reflect Zone A setback lines enforced by the DEP and the Situate zoning bylaw, and to meet the specifications outlined in the zoning bylaw. What about with a sketch plan of drainage improvements?
Yeah, I think you can add that, with a sketch plan.
In addition to a sketch plan of drainage improvements as indicated by the town's consulting engineer. Number four, lots one and three, as shown on the plan, each has... Number four, lots one and three, as shown on the plan, each have more than the 100-foot of frontage. Lot two has 60 feet of frontage on a cul-de-sac. Lots one, two, and three have more than 40,000 square feet of upland. From the plan, it appears a 175-foot lot width can be achieved on each of these lots. The septic systems on lots one, two, and three appear to be horizontally separated from the property lines by at least 10 feet, as required by Title V. These septic systems appear to be separated from the proposed houses by at least 20 feet. These setbacks are permitted by Title V. Number five, the lots shown on the conventional density sketch plan meet the requirements of the Situate Zoning Bylaw and subdivision rules and regulations as required by Section 550.3, Paragraph 2. Number six, the board finds that the typical roadway cross-section as depicted on the July 25th, I'll change that, 2013 plan, meets the Situate subdivision rules and regulations, and the road could be built without waivers. And that's it. Those are the findings. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
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 No.
So we've approved the findings at this point?
Yeah. Okay. So the findings are approved. Now, we need a motion to come back up and either approve or disapprove.
Do you have a motion written for that, Laura?
Well, it's just this one. Yeah. Maybe Bob really wants to read that motion.
I think somebody should certainly read it.
Well, do we need to have any discussion based on those findings?
So we just voted?
We just vote the findings.
Well, there's the findings, right?
Okay, now we've got to make a decision.
All right, I'll let Bob read that.
Or just make a motion.
Where do I start?
Off the end. There's a line, there's a line.
Off the line? That's easy.
You don't even get above the fold.
I can read that much. "Based on these findings of fact, I move to approve the conventional density sketch plan showing three lots for 305 Country Way based on revisions of the plan to address the comments by DPW in their memo of 7/26/2013."
You have a logistical problem. The problem is, is if we voted the findings a fact, then if you come back up and you vote yes, then you're agreeing with the findings a fact. If you vote no, then you need additional information.
Well, I think maybe you want to go back to that vote on the findings of fact.
Yeah.
Have a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, because maybe there are other findings, or, you know, they need to be discussed.
In which case, I withdraw the reading of this motion.
Well, I think we've got to rescind, I need a vote to rescind the vote for findings of fact.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on a favor. We have now rescinded findings of fact.
Maybe I should address, since I was the lone guy. You know, and this is hard for me, because my natural inclination is that people should be able to do what they want with their property and improvement, and make it better, and all those kinds of things. But at the same time, I also read into the rules as I understand them, a standard of reasonability. As I think was mentioned earlier, if we've got enough engineers and spent enough money, we could build whatever we wanted to build. You know, there's a way to do that. But I don't think that's going to happen. And I think that if this were a real, live, conventional development, that we would build two houses on those lots. And I don't think, I don't think that it's appropriate to gerrymander ourselves into a third lot, simply for economic reasons. I'm sensitive to the opposition that the neighbors have indicated. I'm sensitive to Mr. Clarkson's email, and the fact that a member of his agency is here today and expressed some opposition. And we've been asked to make certain findings of fact, and I'm just not convinced that there's a basis in fact to find those necessarily. And, you know, I'm the first to admit, I'm a very non-technical guy, but that's the basis for my vote, is that I'm not convinced that even though the engineering work that I've seen is elegantly done, and obviously done in the hands of people that are very skilled and very competent, you know, I'm not convinced that that's what ought to be there.
Well, I'll tell you where I'm thinking. I actually do concur with you. This is a very difficult decision, and I also support the property rights, but I'm also very sympathetic to the town and the resources that we have. But at the same time, I look at, we've set forth as a board, or as a town, a number of rules and regulations, and I think the onus is on us to maybe change those rules and regulations if we don't, like the lot factor, the lot size, shape factor. Because we're asking someone to adhere to these rules that we may agree that they're not perfect, but they have adhered to those rules. So that's why I was asking that question earlier about, you know, what's our sort of legal responsibility? And I feel like you're asking someone to adhere to the rules, and then we're changing the rules on them, even though we don't like the rules. So that's kind of where I'm at. I feel like I have a responsibility as a board member to approve the three lots based on what they've come forward, even though I truly do not believe that three lots should really be there. I do believe two should be better, but they have adhered to the intent of the rules that we've created. So that's where I'm fighting myself on this.
Well, I think we have to look at the discretion that we have. This is a special permit, and it's our job to decide, you know, it's not a matter of, not a matter of, as a right, right?
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, actually, this is really the assessment of the conventional plan.
The special permit doesn't kick in until...
No, I understand that.
Flexible open space plans, David.
All that I'm saying is that I don't think, I don't think I would, I can't support the idea of three houses being built there. And it would be disingenuous for me to do otherwise.
I'm not even going to indicate whether I agree with that position or not. I'm going to just say that we've heard from our town planner, we've heard from our consulting engineer, whom we've paid for his professional opinion and review. You're an attorney.
My first mistake.
I can't, possibly. I cannot, in spite of whatever I might or might not feel, find any legal, supportable way that we can do anything else than approve this plan. There's simply no other possibility in my mind.
I will, I will sort of piggyback on what Bob's...
Is there a fence coming up here?
No, there's no fence coming.
No fence sitting.
I actually think we're, I agree with Bob, that we don't have a position to sort of deny the conventional subdivision plan. And in fact, unlike you, I don't want to see this plan built, right? And I think we have the ability to control what it looks like as a flexible open space plan. And so, given that, you know, it feels like they've met the letter of the law here, if you will, then our ability to control this is really going to be in the next phase. And I think we don't have any kind of...
I don't think that's the case. And again, I may be flat-out wrong on this, and the reason I say this is, once we come in here and make this decision we're going to make today, if we say, based upon this plan, they can put three houses there, I don't know if we can come back later and say, "We told you three houses before, now we're telling you two."
No, I'm not saying that at all.
You're correct about that.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying we can control how the subdivision gets built. And at this point, I don't think we have anything that's really indicated, based on the positions we've got here, that suggests that they haven't met sort of the letter of the law here. But I do think that we have the ability to fashion what the three home subdivision looks like.
And what I'm saying, though, at this point, is that we've been asked to make certain findings of fact. I think I can decline to make those findings of fact.
I would ask what are these findings you would be able to refute?
I think that there may be a better way of doing it, and that is, is making, once the determination is made whether it's supportable or not, then the findings of fact be somewhat academic.
Yeah.
Right? So to the extent that there is a yes vote for this, for the, assuming that the conventional would support, with all our zoning restrictions and regulations, three houses, then the findings of fact become moot after that.
You convinced me.
No, I think you've given up. But even though there's a subtlety there, I accept.
Yes.
Okay. I think the issue is not so much necessarily what this plan is, is what controls does the town have, and the controls come on the second phase of this. This is three houses. Now, if it ends up that this was supported and supported by the board, that they would put three houses on. If they can't do that within the guidelines of the flexible subdivision, then they don't get three houses.
I think that's exactly right.
Okay.
And I think, that's where it is. Now, I think, but let me step back. I mean, I'm grappling with the same thing that you would. If they came back and we spent umpteen hours, and we looked at this plan and sat there and said, "Would you approve the construction of this plan?", the answer's no. Absolutely not. But the question that exists in the bylaw is, to come back up within our rules and our regulations, can it be built? And I think the answer is yes. I think if you put enough engineers and throw enough money at it, I can build that wall.
I think you all need to just keep in mind that whatever you set tonight, I think you're really, you're really bound to allow that density in the flexible plan. I mean, I don't think...
I agree.
I'm just saying that that's not true.
Okay, I didn't quite understand where you went.
No, that's there. The only difference is, is if they can't come back and put it in within the tight directions of the flexible open space to put three houses in, then they don't get the three.
Yeah, but I mean, they're already showing you.
We already know they can.
I'll see how you can...
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
But I also think, as I look at this, there are things that I would want to see in the flexible open space plan that aren't on this drawing right now.
Oh, very clearly.
Oh, yeah. But I think, again, we'd have to look, right now, for me, the question is just two or three. It's a simple question, but a very hard answer.
Well, I think that the question, that's really not the question. The question is, does this comply with zoning rules and regulations?
Correct.
I think that's the question.
That's the only question.
And those are the facts, the findings of facts that we've laid out.
That's either a yes or no.
Yeah, it's, it's a light bulb. It's on or it's off.
And I guess this is where maybe you're coming to, just to clarify, your point is, that's why I was asking that question earlier. If it conforms with the rules and regulations that we've set forth, we have a sort of a legal responsibility to set the density. But I think what you're saying is, we have some leeway.
I'm saying we have some leeway, and the thing is, is I'm looking at this and I'm saying, we could engineer this to have three houses, with enough skill, you could probably engineer it to have four houses. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a technical guy. But what I am saying is that the three-house plan that I see is so complicated that I don't think it would ever, there seems to be a consensus that the three-house plan that we see would never see the light of day past what is really, at this point in my mind, speculation. Now, maybe authoritative speculation, and maybe I'm beating a dead horse, but, but I, you know, I think there has to be a standard of practicality here. Are we actually going to build three houses there? Could we, would we? Or is it just, is this just an academic exercise that says two houses or three?
Well, I think we've gotten some opinions that say you could do three.
So I think it gets back to, I'm curious, I mean, as we've heard earlier, we all have opinions, right? But opinions don't, shouldn't really matter, per se, right? We need to be very logical about this. So of the findings of fact, what is your...
What do you disagree with?
Yeah, what do you disagree with? Or what would you say, okay, they don't meet the letter of the regulations?
As I said earlier and before, I'm concerned about the retaining wall along the roadway there.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the cost, and like I said, you know, we could engineer that wall on paper and say, we can build whatever we want to build, and, but I don't know whether that's, you know, I don't know what other engineering things we could do to say, let's build another house. I don't know. But what I am saying is that I don't think that just because it's possible, theoretically speaking, that that's what we ought to go with. I'm thinking we ought to look at this from a practical standpoint and say, what's really going to be built there? And anyway, that's the way that I look. So that's where I'm, I'm not really interested in what we could do theoretically, otherwise I'm interested in what's real. That's my opinion.
Bill, the only thing I'd say, and again, to what you're talking about, Eric, respectfully, is that whether you'd build this or not really isn't the question, it's whether the property owner's willing to build, willing to spend the money. You know, you think, you say it may be too expensive and all that, it may be too expensive to you, but the question really isn't what's too expensive to you. The question is, what's he willing to do? Is he willing to build?
Thank you. You know, you've said this much better than me, and I think the answer's no. You know, because we, you know, is the question, is the question is, would the property owner, if we said no to a flexible open space development, would the property owner build that, that we see right there? And the answer's no, in my mind.
That's an opinion, Eric.
I understand.
It's an opinion based on not necessarily full information on the market, you know, what that third lot might be worth, what the cost of the retaining wall might be. You know, we're not here to talk about those sorts of things.
And maybe what I'm seizing on is, you know, and what I heard was an admission that we're not going to build this. You know, we're moving on to the next.
I don't think it's an admission. I think the whole process is designed...
Yeah, I understand.
For exactly what's happening here. You know, the word theoretical has been used a few times. Absolutely, that's what this process is. What theoretically can you do on a piece of property that meets all of the zoning regulations, that then allows you to move on to propose a flexible open space development?
It gets, I think it'll get to degrees, too. If the issue is about this wall, and you looked at that wall and said it was 150 feet deep, right, you probably would get to the point where you say, that's not practical. You're looking at a retaining wall that, you know, retaining walls that do get built of this size, we've heard from our engineer that says it's technically feasible to do. I think they're sort of within the letter of the law here.
All right.
That's sort of my view, but...
It's not will it be built, it's could, could it be built? And does it comply with existing zoning? This one is, and I've been doing this most of my adult life.
I can't write to you what.
What have you been doing?
Since the creation of the flexible open space subdivision, this one has gone through probably more iterations than any that I've ever seen. And I think it has to do with the fact that it's a very complex piece of property. There's been multiple bites at the apple, and none of the bites of the apple have been to the point that it sits there and says, it can't be built. Now, would you build it?
Clearly not. No.
Would I build it? Absolutely not. I'd take two houses, run and be a happy camper. But...
But you don't know how much you paid for it in the first place.
The cost is not mine.
You don't know the idea what the ROI is.
Not what I'm asked to look at. I'm asked to look at and make a decision as to whether that could be built, and does it comply with existing zoning.
And I'm still wrapped around the axle with the idea that at unlimited cost, anything could be built. And that bothers me that that's the standard that we apply, because it's an artificial standard in my mind.
Agreed.
I would, I would say to you, if I thought we were looking at unlimited cost here, I would agree with you. I don't think we're looking at unlimited cost. Is it expensive?
But unfortunately, or whatever, it is what it is, and we don't have that, so.
Yeah, depending on how the lot sizing was configured or decided upon, you may only have one house in there.
Yeah.
But anyway. Let's try it again. Looking for a motion, one way or the other.
What are we motioning and what are we voting on?
No, we're looking for a motion as to whether we would accept this as a conventional subdivision showing a three-lot capability.
Okay, so we bypassed the findings of fact?
Let's bypass the finding of fact.
All right. Can I see whatever that piece of paper was again?
You sure can. You're below the fold again.
Thank you. Based on these findings of fact, and.
Just move. Just say, I move.
Thank you. "I move to approve the conventional density sketch plan showing three lots for the parcel at 305 Country Way based on revision of the plan to address the comments by DPW, the latest plan revision date being 7/25/2013, revision number five."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll make the unanimous aye.
It's unanimous.
Now your work really begins.
Ask Bill.
What I would suggest is that we continue. I'm sorry?
You want me to make that? Do we need to do findings of fact?
I don't think we need to.
No, there's a motion for a continuance and.
Oh.
Do you know what it is? Okay.
Well, thanks. You know, I think.
It was easy, we wouldn't pay you all this money.
I appreciate that.
Sorry about that. We got kind of ahead of ourselves in the discussion, so.
I think it was good, though. It helped clarify some things for me.
For future reference, I think that we can decline to make findings of fact. They may in fact exist, but I think we can just say, we're not going to go there.
You can, but it's a really good idea to do that. I mean, legally.
No, I understand.
It is, you know, not only, you know, you go against the apple, but you're on your butters soon or something like that.
Oh, that would never happen.
I need to make a motion. I'll make the motion. "I move to accept the applicant's request to continue public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space special permit, and scenic road public shade hearing, public shade tree hearing for Ash Tree Farm, lane at 305 Country Way until August 8, 2013, at 8:30 p.m."
Eight o'clock. Oh, eight o'clock. Yeah, you can change that. If that gives them enough time to, you know, keep doing what you're doing, and John, enough time to finish your review?
Well, assuming this is a plan submitted, assuming there's no changes to that.
Well, yeah, I think.
Is that a fair assumption, Greg?
I mean, you have our most current subplans.
You've got the most current subplans, yes.
So.
There's nothing new coming.
Forgot to work, okay.
No.
No, okay.
I'm standing right now.
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you were.
Eight o'clock, you said?
Eight o'clock.
Eight, eight, eight.
August 8, 2013.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. I mean, thank you all for your spirited discussion before we act on Bob's memo, or Bob's motion.
Bob's motion.
I thank you, gentlemen. Good discussion.
Yep, absolutely.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
You're in. Unanimous. What? Now what do we do?
Now your work really begins.
Ask Bill.
What I would suggest is that we continue. I'm sorry?
You want me to make that? Do we need to do findings of fact?
I don't think we need to.
No, there's a motion for a continuance and.
Oh.
Do you know what it is? Okay.
Well, thanks. You know, I think.
It was easy, we wouldn't pay you all this money.
I appreciate that.
Sorry about that. We got kind of ahead of ourselves in the discussion, so.
I think it was good, though. It helped clarify some things for me.
For future reference, I think that we can decline to make findings of fact. They may in fact exist, but I think we can just say, we're not going to go there.
You can, but it's a really good idea to do that. I mean, legally.
No, I understand.
It is, you know, not only, you know, you go against the apple, but you're on your butters soon or something like that.
Oh, that would never happen.
I need to make a motion. I'll make the motion. "I move to accept the applicant's request to continue public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space special permit, and scenic road public shade hearing, public shade tree hearing for Ash Tree Farm, lane at 305 Country Way until August 8, 2013, at 8:30 p.m."